All right, well, welcome, everybody. This is the meeting of the Equity Policy Committee of the Harwood Unified School District School Board. Calling to order at seven oh eight, it looks like. So first item of business, well, just we have our agenda, we're going to approve minutes. Take public comment and then we're going to move into discussion.
I moved to approve minutes from last meeting. You have to second.
Yeah, I don't know either. If we do, and I'm able, I will. Any objections to the motion? All right, proven the minutes. The minutes are approved. Board members present. On the chair of this committee, Life Legaros Duxbury. Tori Taravella. From Waterbury, is that how you pronounce your name, Tori?
Really close, Taravella.
Taravella, thank you. And Mike, are you officially part of the committee?
Superintendent is ex officio, non-voting on all committees, so yes.
Great.
Superintendent in the chair, that's in the board policy.
Wonderful. Members of the public, I don't see anybody else here, so I don't think we have any. And this is not a, this is not a panel situation, right, Mike? So if there was somebody, we'd know.
We would see them.
Okay. So next item of business is public comments, and having no members of public present. There will be no comments at the moment. So, moving into the agenda. The plan here is to sort of talk about the resources from last time that were on the agenda, and I think we could actually just go through them and people could highlight what they like. And or just if there's questions that we want to bring up to each other and discuss. And then we could start thinking about whether we have some ideas around our draft and or our guidelines for equity policy. And then I suspect that we might want to do another round of resources if people have come across some things that they think would be great for other people to look at. And then we can by that point, think about where we want to go with the next meeting. So does that sound good to everybody? All right, so thinking about the resources that were in our list from last time. I almost feel like we could start from the bottom of that list. And go, go up because I think the educational quality standards are a nice foundational piece. Since that's something that barring some strange developments, looks like it should be put into place and approved in the next little while. And of course, we're we need to follow those regulations, so. Why don't with each of these, we just kind of start with, were there things that jumped out at people in terms of things that you liked about it? Things you have questions about, things you wanted to highlight for us to keep in mind? Around the educational quality standards?
Um, yeah, so I think, I think just on this document, kind of looking at it, I think one of the things is when you look at like the V S B A Equity Policy, like example. They have implemented, like an implementation section, a lot of the model policies that we are looking at too. And I think one of the districts did it, I'm just blanking right now. But we can wait for Elizabeth.
Hi. I literally was in the calendar today going, why do we have no meetings in our calendar? Like, I'm just, you know what I'm saying? And I had like made it in my Google, so my apologies, I just got back from Harwood Cross game.
Nice, how'd they do?
Um, they, Montpelier doesn't have the strongest team right now, so they won.
Perfect, yep, cool. Alright, so. We were, we were just starting, yeah, just starting, we were gonna go bottom up from the five nine twenty twenty four agenda and talk about the resources, so I was just about to comment on the yeah, thank you. And I was just saying that, I feel like you know, the V S B A Model Policy doesn't have it, but I pretty sure another, a different one that we were looking at, and I'll find it. Had under the E Q S updates, it has like promote critical thinking around history contributions, you know, and has encouraged students. You provide welcoming spaces, and I feel like that could be a really helpful thing to incorporate into our implementation. In some way, especially those little little things, but otherwise, it was very helpful. Resource and educational.
Cool. Was that piece you were just speaking to, is there like a reference in the E Q S draft? The language that you just noted? Is there a place we could find that and noted, or?
It's more like, it's just in more general, but it's, they have like a couple in the, like those cute little like bullet points. With the figures like on page two. And I know that's like broad, but I feel like we could take those statements and narrow if needed, kind of thing.
Like the statement of purpose piece?
I'm looking at the same thing.
I'm looking at the E Q S draft and seeing like page three, it's got the statement of purpose, which a lot of that is new language.
I was looking at right up above the E Q S updates on page two. It has like that picture of like the person at the gears and their brain question mark in a circle and all the hands in a circle.
Okay, I see. In the, the, what do they call it, the plain language kind of version?
Yeah.
Yeah. So promote critical thinking around history, they got the person with the gears, and encourage students to explore questions about ethnic and social identities with the question mark.
Yeah, and it seems like something that like I said, could be useful to incorporate in some way to like capture the updates in the implementation section of our policy, if we wanted to go that route.
Tori, what page are you on? I'm sorry, I just, I opened up the E Q S, I was looking at the V S B A Model Equity Policy, but it sounds like we're looking at the E Q S right now?
Yeah, so on the, you know, hold on, can I share a screen?
That would be helpful, just to make sure we're all looking at the same thing.
Mike, can I share a screen?
Okay, you should be able to now.
Alright. Sorry, I'm looking right here. These guys. Cause it's kind of hold on, if you look at okay, theirs was wildly long and bonkers, going back to this, sorry, so it just seems like something that could fit kind of in implementation, because like the V S B A one has like this section that says like the district will systematically use and continues on, and it seems like since these are the updates, we could kind of use some of this language to put into our draft. Is what I was thinking.
So we're looking at the, yeah, apologies for being late, the V S B A model or the implementation, those bullets and commenting on those, is that what we're doing right now?
I'm switching between the two, to be honest, yeah.
Some ideas.
Yeah, the idea, Elizabeth, was to work our way through the resources and just comment on what, what was, you know, good, what we had questions about, and we just talked about starting with the E Q S, because that's kind of foundation behind everything.
Okay, I definitely have got some good notes here as well, I guess you can't see it, that's interesting, it's blurry, so I think when others are finished, I'll sort of jump in as well.
Yeah, go ahead, I think.
You know, like looking at the V S B A one, and you know, some of these are going to be more specific, right, with the policy, and I'm gonna defer to our legal counsel on the phone on this. I get a little concerned of statements like, you know, the school board holds itself in all district and school. Decision makers, faculty and sports staff accountable for building a district-wide commitment to equity. Like those statements scare me, and I know that we want to make sure that people are truly committed to this, and I think you can do that via the policy and the procedures. But when I see a statement like that, I get scared about people literally coming in and suing us. And I just, I have to just put that statement out there, that felt like a really strong statement that I think we have to be very careful of. Because if like literally board members are putting themselves out there, that, you know, if people see that we have this policy and we're saying that we're doing you know, these certain, certain implementations, and people then perceive that we're not doing that, you know, a statement like that just makes me feel like literally personally, like legally accountable now, and that scares me a bit.
Could you, so this is in the model policy from V S B A?
Yeah, I mean, did you just have that one up for you, or I'm happy to share it?
Yeah, so I, okay, so I have it, I have that. I kind, okay, I kind of have like that, but then I like added stuff and moved it, but I know what you're talking about, you're talking
Yeah, it's the second, the second sentence, right here. And just something like, and then I'll comment on the, the second state, I'm sorry, the third sentence here where it says incorporate principles of equity within all policies, programs, operations, practices. You know, Tori, you guys and Danielle have done an unbelievable job, I think, with the procedures and the policies and every, the policies, I should say, that you've been working through, really making sure to bring the equity lens in and putting the correct placeholders, for example. But it could be that certain policies you actually don't, it doesn't mean that you're not examining them through a lens of equity, but when I see this and it says that you're going to incorporate the principles in all.
Right, like it should almost, it should almost like
All applicable, exactly, I just, I think we have to be careful, and I know we're not using this meeting for wordsmithing per se. But I think this sort of sets us up for developing our own policies that I think we have to we can have big ambitions here, and I think we're gonna end up with, you know, a great policy. But I think we have to be very careful with some of this language, because this needs, we all need to be on the hook for the implementation, the accountability of this, and we have to be realistic that this language makes sense.
That's fair.
I mean, you know, one thing about the model policy is that V S B A has, you know, vetted it legally. So.
Actually, my friend was the lawyer on that, she just actually left. Yeah, I was gonna have coffee with her next week just to get caught up on that, so I was gonna get her opinion on some of that. But just because their legal counsel looked at it, doesn't mean that is, and we all know in the legal world, Tori knows better than me certainly, that there couldn't be other interpretations that could open us up to liability.
Yeah.
Something to consider.
I think we can always yeah, yeah, we can definitely consider it, double check with ours, and there might be way to just add, you know, like a tempering of it, or or whatever, but I do think, you know, for for all the policies that we've been going, how you want, with my memory. For the most part, like the policy section, like in the policy, like that upper part is like, really like, these are our goals and aspirations, and this is what we are hoping to do with this policy, this is the oversight of what we are hoping to accomplish with this policy. Whereas like implementation is is I feel like the more risky area of we could be held to, why didn't you follow this, if that makes sense?
It does, I had similar thoughts where, you know, when I look at the implementation, and I know maybe this would be more in the procedures, but there's no indication of frequency, you know, I just feel like some of that language is vague. You know, like
And that's, that's something Danielle and I have been coming across a lot in some of our policies, so like, we have been adding, you know, and the superintendent or designee will check in and report to the board annually, or bi-annual, you know, every, you know, twice a year, whatever, and we've put in some time parameters, so that's definitely something that we can consider doing with this.
I think that would be great, and you know, some of it's around, you know, the measurement in here too, I'm trying to find specifically, I need my glasses. Anyways, but yeah, I think we need to, to be clear on the frequency there. The other comment I had was, you know, there's a lot in here around culturally, which I think is fantastic when we're talking about like ethnicity, race, and so on. Where I felt like this was light was, I felt like there was not enough on disabilities and poverty in here. Which I think is very applicable, because in here, it's, you're supposed to also look at, you know, the demographics and who you're dealing with here in terms of your particular community. And I'm gonna share, and I know in public here, I have a student with disabilities, and I've had to really come up to speed and be his advocate. And it's been an interesting process as a parent, because, you know, a lot of the feedback I receive is your son's really lucky that you're so involved and you're his advocate. And when I hear that, that scares me, because not all parents are going to have the time, you know, the, the, the will, the knowledge, the access to be able to educate themselves to be their child's advocate. And so when I see this, I think, you know, especially when we're looking at the number of kids we have on I E Ps. I think it's really important that we maybe take a look at this and just make sure we're incorporating in those who have disabilities. And then again, through that poverty lens as well, I think that there's opportunities to really strengthen that.
I agree with that. Definitely.
I'm trying to find where oh, it was the first bullet point, systematically use district-wide and individual school level data. Disaggregated, disaggregated by race and all of these to inform district decisions. You know, my question around the data was, has that data been identified? And so, Dr. Mike, I think that's kind of a question for you. As I'm trying to understand, you know, what data exists, what data exists that we're, you know, required to capture. And just, that feels pretty vague to me, and it feels like we might want to add some more specifics around that. Without stepping into the procedures area, but that just felt a little vague to me.
Probably the best, and I think I mentioned it in the last meeting, the best information we would have would be some of our data we collected for the federal civil rights data collection, it's got the C R D C. That's something I could pull together, probably when school's out, we could pull together the summer and take a deeper dive into it.
And it's probably disparate, because, I mean, you obviously have, you know, the disability type data, and to a degree, you're gonna have the poverty data too, so it's probably just bringing all those components together of all the different groups we've identified in here that we want to make sure incorporated and cared for in this policy.
Yep, absolutely.
And I guess last point, and then I will stop dominating here, is there's language in here about providing access. And I thought that was interesting, because again, you know, thinking through you know, these different groups, it's one thing to provide access, it's another thing to provide support and encouragement. And I think that's really important. You know, it could be things like athletics, and actually, I don't know if everyone saw, in Waterbury Front Porch Forum, there was a really nice note from a senior student who's an athlete, and she was advocating around the budgets, but she said specifically that Harwood has done a really good job of making athletics available to to most students, as in, you know, those who otherwise perhaps maybe couldn't afford to, is sort of how I read in between the lines. But just because you've made it affordable, doesn't mean that we don't have people who are actually like really advocating for these particular groups and making sure that they're involved, and again, you know, understanding how to participate, right? It's not like, oh, well, you know, we have a way for you to do it, it's like actively encouraging that participation or that access.
Such a great point.
That's what I have to start.
Yeah, I think that last piece comes out in the the, the plain language that around the E Q S that Tori was pointing to. Right, one of those four kind of icons was providing a welcoming space. So often you hear this put in terms of belonging. Right, we're going beyond just like, you know, inclusion, just allowing you to come be part of things, but we're actually creating a situation where you can thrive.
You know what, sorry, I'm gonna dominate one more time, because again, this is an observation that I had, again, is being a parent of a child with a disability. Is that I've worked with some absolutely phenomenal teachers with my son through middle school and now through his freshman year, some of them really know how to work with his particular disability, which is dyslexia and dysgraphia. Some teachers just are not as capable, and it could be that they haven't had the training, it could be that their brains just don't think that way, it could be that they already have their hands full, you know, delivering the classroom, this is not a criticism, my point is actually that some of this accessibility or some of this training, maybe we're actually better off having pockets of teachers and administrators who are almost like specialists, who can help to support these individual groups versus sort of, and I'm just gonna use a broad term here, like the peanut butter approach, which is, we expect all our teachers to be able to provide, you know, an absolute best learning experience for, you know, this particular disability, because many of these classrooms, there's multiple challenges going on at once, and my observation is these teachers are doing an absolutely phenomenal job trying to, you know, maneuver, you know, between the curriculum, the learning styles of this, that, that's extremely challenging. And what I've found works for us and for our family is really working with the teachers and just getting recommendations where your child has this particular learning style. These teachers have been shown that, you know, they do a really good job with that. There could be other teachers that work really well with advanced students or people who have, you know, other cultural needs. So I don't know if you guys have perspectives on that, you know, when I look at this, again, we have staff, we have teachers that have so much on their plates in terms of what they're trying to deliver day in and day out. And I'm trying to, you know, it's like, how do you educate them, continue to make awareness, have the professional development that everyone's getting? But how do you, I mean, does it make sense to have specialists or people who are just a little bit more capable in delivering some of this? That could also provide, you know, sort of safe spaces or accessible spaces for these groups as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, my take on that is that there's it can be a little tricky when we're talking about groups. Because like, as you pointed out before, like, there's, there's a big difference between students with specific learning disabilities and other groups that might be listed in these policies, right, like by race or poverty or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, I think some of the, some of the things you're saying, I think I agree with in sort of general ways, like there certainly can be times when students need to connect with adults that you know, maybe share their identity, for example, is a way I might think about it around something like race, right, you might have an affinity group. But, you know, that's always for the purpose ultimately of, you know, of fuller belonging, right? So you know, I think same with disabilities, right, ultimately, we want kids to be in the least restrictive environment. Want them to be mainstreamed as much as, as possible and practicable. So it's not that there's not a place for those sorts of things, but just I think, you know, a lot of these principles, and I really appreciate the the T F R statement around this, that, you know, the principles really give this idea of continuous learning, right, that like, nobody's gonna just achieve and be like, I am the expert with you know, every student of this type, but there's like a striving that we're all trying to create, like a collective space. Because that's the beauty of, of public schools, right, we all come together into, in a common space. And so students are learning what it's like to belong and with, across difference. So I think that that's gotta be at the core of things. And then how students are, you know, provided specialized support. I think is gonna look different depending on which of these dimensions we're talking about. So I just, if you want to say more about what you're thinking, like, I just, I
That makes sense, and I think, again, I know that, you know, perhaps disabilities is slightly different, and I, and I believe anyways, I'm not gonna say I know, but it appears anyways from being in the schools, that certainly there are educators who have stepped up to provide, you know, safe spaces for some of the groups that we're trying to cover in this equity policy, and I say, I guess that was being the point, right, is we can't make every single educator and administrator an expert on all of this, and so it's like, how do you provide that sort of broad-based education, like you said, so it's it's like ingrained in the fabric of, of our schools, but that you have these pockets, you know, that various different groups know that they can tap into, that are perhaps a little bit more specialized in terms of what the support that they may require.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the complicating things is just like you know, the extent to which this umbrella term of equity, and when you're talking about all these different groups, right, you know, the extent to which like many of these protections might already be in place in different ways through different policies or federal law. And so I think that's a one piece that's a little bit complicated, is like not wanting to repeat or be, you know, totally redundant, with some of the other things that are already out there that are probably have a lot more detail behind them. So, you know, I'm trying to think like and I think your, your perspective you know, with your kid, and thank you so much for sharing that. And bringing that openly to the table.
I think he'd be fine with that, I mean, he's pretty open about that, you know, so I just wanted to put that lens in there as well, you know, that I think that's part of what we're also trying to solve for, is making sure those kids feel like they also belong, right?
Absolutely, totally. Right, so that, that's a great example, like, they might already have some legal protections around, you know, you have to have an I P, and you have to have, you know, this many meetings, and you have to have the goals on the I P and get access to these services, and maybe this policy can kind of you know, give a nod to that stuff, but also, like, maybe this, the, the value add here is speaking more to that last piece that you mentioned, maybe it's more about what is, what does actual belonging look like? You know, for students with different sorts of disabilities in our schools.
So I like what you just said, that, I mean, it's, it sounds like, and I think we had talked in the previous meeting, two is an action item for over the summer is making sure that we do take an inventory, right, so one being all the policies that Tori and Danielle and others have been working through, right, but two is just getting that full inventory of everything that we're doing, that's sort of like encompassing where we're already taking action and things have already been implemented and really tying those back so that we can then do, I think, a gap assessment, right, to see what else we might need to also put in place.
Absolutely, and, you know, don't want to get too far in the process at the moment, but that's part of my thinking about when we're ready to bounce this to some district folks. Because I would love to, to hear from teachers and students who are involved in this work and try to understand like what, what they think that they need from us, particularly in terms of protections, right? There's folks out there that, you know, without it being written in stone, sometimes feel like they're sort of, you know, taking risks, because this, this stuff can be you know, it can be emotional and it can be tough, and you're gonna garner pushback. You know, it can be emotional and it can be tough and you're gonna garner pushback. Um, so I think that's part of that inventory that you're talking about. I picture is trying to understand like, who are the leaders in our district right now? Who are not only doing amazing things maybe in their classroom, but are also, you know, connecting other educators to think deeply about these issues and things like that. And what do they wanna see in writing to feel reassured that the board has their back?
And I would just add in addition to protection is that advocacy piece, right? So again, you know, thinking about those with disability or poverty and making sure that we got embedded advocates. For encouraging them, you know, whether it's, you know, the help they need, the voice they need, learning to ask for accommodations. Being willing to talk about, you know, wanting to try athletics or theater or something like that. Where perhaps they haven't had that exposure coming out of their homes at an earlier age. Um, and making sure that we've got the advocacy piece as well.
Absolutely, I mean, that's another place where people have to stick their necks out a bit, right? Be like, okay, I'm pushing on this system.
You know, if I come from a home where, you know, mom and dad didn't have the money to buy me cleats to be playing soccer. And all these kids have been playing since the age of four, but they're really interested in trying. You know, how do they know where to go? And the fact that there are resources, you know, when I was literally just at the game right now, we were talking, um. You know, I was talking to the head of the Booster Club and we were talking about that, like getting some aggressive fundraising around our athletics. One, because of budget cuts. Two, because I think in the Booster covers theater as well, so it's arts, it's all extracurricular. But how do we do a better job of getting funding from, let's say, businesses? So that we have enough funding, so that there's never a financial barrier for anyone who might want to participate. And I think that's really important.
Absolutely. And, and, you know, we know that people are already doing this work and just having it in writing that like, something they can point to and be like. I'm just not doing this out of the goodness of my heart or because this happens to be my kid involved in this point. As you said, like, not every kid has parents with, with the time or wherewithal to do that advocacy, so. I love it. Um, I, I would love to, to just bring attention to the, the EQS language itself. Um, so this would be the um, in, in the last agenda, the, from the ninth, this would be. The second to last little sub bullet bear there, EQS draft changes. The one above the, the one that says plain language. Um, because I, I continue to be struck, I mean, I've seen this draft language for a bit. Um, but like on page three, under the statement of purpose. Are people able to get there? Would it be better for me to share?
I've got it. We've got it.
Cool, um. I find that, you know, that, all that stuff there that's sort of underlined is, is new, right? That's, you know, track changes sort of thing, so you can see there cross out a couple of things, but. Um, so if you're to kind of like, you know, cross your eyes and imagine without the underlying stuff, this statement of purpose was formerly pretty sparse. You know, basically said continuous improvement and attain rigorous standards and high-quality programs. Um, and now they've added, um, you know, that paragraph that starts in addition to the non-discriminatory protection. So they're kind of reinforcing, there's already some things in place. And. They're talking about general life or activities of a school. And then they have, like, I think they've expanded that list, right? And that includes what Elizabeth was referencing around poverty, they call it socioeconomic status here, housing status. Um, and then that next piece where it says these rules further require. Um, this is, this part I feel is, is a, is, is a major change and kind of reflected in the plain language stuff that Tori was pointing to. Um, but it says culturally responsive pedagogy that critically examines and imparts a comprehensive historical and socially conscious understanding of. And then it's got that sub list with A, B, C, and D. Um. And I just, I think that that part is so powerful. And I think a lot of times, as Elizabeth said, like, equity is seen as sort of an access thing. And so to go beyond that to belonging, I think is really important. But here we're really seeing, you know, a lot of curricular and instructional kind of implications around like what we're trying to teach kids about. Um, so understanding around, you know, history and, um, you know, systemic racism and discrimination. Um. And so I just, you know, and it ends with the strengthening of democracy in the United States and globally. So there's like a big civics component. Um, so I, I just think that that part's interesting because, you know, I think this, this part kind of reaches beyond demographics. And, you know, says that like, all students, all of our students should be learning this stuff. And quite honestly, it's, it's very ambitious. Um, but I think, you know, as we're thinking about our educators out there that, you know, some of whom have been doing this for years. Having something like this in writing and potentially reinforcing our policy, I think, is, is really crucial.
Can that be part of our inventory as well? Because, and I thought I was reading something today, I mean, I, I thought we had actually in our, um, in our supervisor reunion. Already implemented quite a bit of this. And, and again, I mean, whatever quite a bit means, you know, that's personal perspective, right? You know, um, but I, I would like to better understand how that has already been built into our curriculum to date.
Yeah, I don't, Mike, I don't know if you wanna comment.
And, and that's something we can, maybe I can bring Shannon Leslie to a meeting and the two of us could, uh, kind of go over what we're seeing in schools. We certainly have a lot of work to do in that area. And, and that's, I think, one of the intents of T F R and, and some of the work we're doing. To, uh, that, that I think a policy would help us with, but, but there are some elements that we have incorporated. And certainly some practices that I think are good, uh, it's just that we need to do a lot more work.
I mean, as a parent, again, I've got a child ending their freshman year, another child who's ending, uh, her, her fifth grade year. My experience through, especially I would say, you know, again, looking especially back over the past four years or so. At Cross at Brook in my son's curriculum this year. I mean, I, I saw some, I see this embedded, you know, and I was there having teacher conferences. Literally, you know, walking through the hallways or re- looking at the materials they were doing. And again, I have to help my son with some of the stuff, so I'm getting firsthand experience looking through. And so when I see some of these bullets, I'm like, I know they're getting, you know, again, is it enough? I can't answer that question, you know, we need to define what enough is, but, um. Yes, so I think that, that inventory would be important for us all, just to make sure we're all on the same page of what exists.
That's, that's fantastic, um, and I'll just share that, you know, my kids are, one of my kids is about to leave Cross at Brook. And they're both there right now. And also, I've seen, I've seen a lot of it. Um, I think it's also sort of, you know, uneven, sometimes it sort of depends on the teacher a bit. Um, I've done some professional development, even offered some around equity in the past in the district. And there's certainly some, you know, folks that are across the spectrum in terms of their depth of understanding, their comfortableness with bringing it into the classroom. Um, and I certainly know of people who are doing, you know, really powerful work and or have like. A lot of um, understanding around this stuff that, you know, are very careful. And are sometimes worried, you know, getting pushed back from parents. Um. And not always sure whether they're, you know, it's fully, fully sanctioned and embraced.
And I think that's a balance that we're gonna have to strike, you know, um, in terms of, and again, that's why I'm saying, what is enough? Because there's gonna be some part of the spectrum that's like, this should be a hundred percent of our education. And then you're gonna have the other spectrum, the community that says, get this out of the schools, right? And we need to understand and strike the right balance, I think, for our communities and do so in a way. That is not pitting our community against each other. And I mean, this is just gonna be a really delicate balance, right? And to try to understand. How to do that.
Agreed, I, I think, you know, the word balance, I. I struggle with a little bit. Um, you know, I, I appreciate the EQS draft language because I feel it's pretty strong. And I'm sure, you know, this, this would be, you know, against the law right now in many states, right? But then this, this proposal, um, for draft regulations in Vermont.
Why do you say it would be against the law in many states?
Speaking of Florida.
Well, that's one, one state, but, you know.
Texas, Louisiana, you know, Mississippi.
What, what of this proposed language would make it illegal?
Um, talking about, you know, the, where is it? Promote critical thinking around the history contributions and viewpoints of many different ethnic and social groups like that. Would be a no-go, I will be completely honest. I have friends that are teaching in Mississippi and they have been told to teach their children that the Civil War was purely about economics. And that's it.
Interesting, okay.
Um, so, and they, they do have state auditors come into their high schools to make sure, which is. Wild on a lot of levels, um, and unfortunately, they are not the only southern state going that direction.
So, like, could I ask you just elaborate perhaps on your comment around, um, my choice of words around balance?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know. It, it brings to mind, you know, something like, um, both sides kind of thing. And so, you know, if there are people in our community who are advocating for, you know, positions like. Um, the ones Tori was just mentioning, which, you know, are, have, you know, these laws are, I don't know, a dozen, maybe fifteen, twenty states. Recently have passed those kind of laws around, um, teaching about race and history, um, as well as LGBTQ issues. Um. You know, I, I don't think the policy necessarily needs to take like a middle ground on it, I guess I would say. Which when I hear balance, like, that's one possibility that comes to mind. Um, you know, these, these issues are contentious. And so I, I totally agree that the purpose is not to divide our community, but it's, you know, it's likely that there will be some people who aren't happy. And who push back. And for me, the EQS helps us see kind of like baseline, what's, you know, imminently, you know, regulation in Vermont anyway. And so it gives us, you know, it gives us backup for our policy to be backup to our educators.
And so just to clarify, this E, E Q S language, this has been. Accepted, this is draft as of, or has this been accepted? This was drafted as of May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three?
It's like in the process of being accepted, so I believe the State Board of Education has to, um, approve it twice.
Yeah.
And I believe they've approved it once.
Okay.
That's, that's what, that's my, I might be mistaken, but I, not, that's, that's my understanding of where they are in the process.
Okay, and then the EQS, you know, so once, once they then approve it, then it basically, we are like mandated then for this to become part of our curriculum. So then, so then there's no debate. I think my comment around balance had more to do with, you know, some people are gonna think that you've gone too far. And some people are gonna think you haven't gone far enough. And I feel like part of our job is board members representing all of our communities and all of our town. Is trying to make sure that we're finding the common ground as much as we possibly can, because you were never going to appease everybody. But I think using this, once this is approved, again, that's a starting point, so there's no debate, right? You know, we can, that's great. Now, if we said this is a starting point and we're gonna go way beyond this, that's when I'm gonna step in and say, we need better balance here. Because there's always gonna be people who are saying you're not doing enough and some people who are saying you're, you're going too far. But if we already have the, you know, that, that's what I meant by balance.
Okay, I, I appreciate that clarification. And yeah, I mean, my, my personal feelings, like the EQS as our kind of baseline or backup, wherever we wanna put it, is good. Like, I don't feel like we need to, you know, shoot for the stars beyond it. I think it's, it's solid and thinking about, okay, what does this look like in policy? How do we reiterate some of it? How do we bring it into our context? To me is like a fine goal for us.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, I think that, you know, this gets into kind of like the, the weird things about democracy, right? There's the whole like, what, what most people want, so like, we're kind of representing our constituents in that case. Um, but there's also the, the question of how we protect the rights of the minority, right? And so just even, you know, when you're thinking about school budgets, right? People are gonna point and say, wow, why are these kids so expensive and things like that? And the fact is like, our obligation is to every individual student. And so, um, you know, I do like that in the model policy that it just mentions, I think, pretty much all of those policy examples, say it in one way or another. Just to be very clear that equity means providing more resources to some.
Yeah, and you guys are used to my measurement statement, which is, again, allocating the money is one thing, but making sure they're actually getting like true benefits. And that we're measuring, you know, the intended value creation of, you know, making those investments, uh, into otherwise marginalized. Uh, communities, I think, is, is important. So I think that's just the hot button, right? With, you know, Act one twenty-seven, which is, okay, the money is going there, but there's no, does not seem to be any sort of. Tracking of how that money is literally being spent like on those particular groups. And I think that, this is me in my soapbox, I think we can tighten that up and, and, and our, even in our district. Because again, I mean, Thursday is gonna be telling, uh, whether this budget passes or not, we still have a large percentage of our community who's, you know, unhappy. And I think the more we can do, and Dr. Mike and team are already doing this, they're doing an amazing job, having stepped in and just in one year, like improved our reporting so much. And the community newsletter and everything is like a big step in that direction. But I think, um, it will be important as we, you know, express and socialize. And I think this is something we can be proud of to go out to the community with our equity policy, is backing it with numbers and showing people that it really makes a difference.
Mike, were you trying to say something earlier?
Uh, just that, uh. It wa- it was just affirming something that was said.
I think you were affirming that was your understanding of where the model rules and practices are standing. Um, so, I mean, like, I don't know if you wanna continue talking about the resources, but I kind of started. A small draft of the equity policy, I kind of like took. The V S B A one and I took like language that I liked, um. From other policies and threw them in there and stuff, and I did it with in edit mode of the Google Docs. So that you guys can see what I added, um, I'm just throwing it out there, so do you need to skip out a little bit early, like in the next ten, fifteen minutes? Um, I didn't know if you wanted to take a peek at it or not.
Yeah, absolutely, I was thinking we should talk about the other policies, so this would be a great way for you to communicate your thinking.
Yeah, okay, so if you don't mind, I'll share a screen.
Please.
Um, and I am obviously open to changing this, I will, actually, I'm just gonna do this right now and share with you, uh. That you guys can have edit access to this too, just so, you know, if we wanna play around with it, um, in between meetings and, you know, just go in and do. I mean, when, when, this is not necessarily that we have to do it this way, but when Danielle and I mess around with the policies, we do it in the suggested mode. So that we can go through and like, say like, I don't really like that and like, X, or I like that, or, you know, so, and plus, so we can keep track of how it changed, um, between all of us. So, um, so I took the, I took this, the one from V S B A. And then there is another section in it from another policy that, you know, started out with like, the district believes equity is the foundation of excellence. And I really liked that, so I kind of just added that in, um, and combined it with the first statement. That was the first sentence that was with the, the Vermont School Board recommendation. I also like took a couple other different sentences from other policies that I liked, um, like this next one, the school district is committed to incorporating. Inclusive educational opportunities, um, and same for the one below as well, um. And then definitions I didn't touch a lot, a lot of the policies have the same definitions. Have the same definitions. Um, and I also just didn't feel educated enough. To feel like I needed to add anything. That doesn't mean that I'm not open to. Adding stuff, but, um.
Great. Can I just ask you a question on the definitions again, sort of more perspective? Um, you know, when I saw especially the definitions around. Equity, I was like, these aren't definitions. I, it didn't feel like definitions to me. It felt more. Like introductory language, sort of like level setting, but it didn't feel like a formal like definitions. And I know a policy is a little different than like a formal legal document, um.
Yeah, no, I feel like, I, I do feel like it could be tightened up a little bit more, like even if you see like culture or cultural. That one.
Well, I mean, does it?
That one looks more like a definition than educational equity looks like a definition. Um, so I do think that needs editing. I just wasn't. Prepared to do it for the starting, um, but I, yeah, I agree. I think, I think it needs to be.
These feel more like goals, right? Identify and re- remove inequitable practice. Like that to me feels more like a goal than a definition.
But I do feel like we need to define educational equity, um.
Agree.
Which, um, which part did you say sounded like a goal, Elizabeth?
Identify and remove inequitable practices, examining biases and creating inclusion. I mean, to me, that, that to me is not a definition. That's like an action you're taking, you know, so.
Right, so I, yeah, I feel like it should almost be like an actual definition of educational equity and then like a separate section of. Educational equity goals, maybe, you know, like.
I mean, the way that's written, right? The definition is at the beginning and then it says working towards these involves. So I think it's like. Is defining. The outcome, the outcome of equity and then what the process might look like.
Yeah, I was just.
Clarity though, I think is important.
Yeah. Did you, wh- what did you think about the, um? Essex Westford definitions?
Pull it up, I'm gonna stop sharing, look at it, yeah.
When you say something like educational equity occurs when, to me, that doesn't sound like a definition of what it is. Maybe I'm.
I think, I think that's a matter of wording. I think we could do it. I think that could work. But it just needs to be wordsmithed better. This, I mean, and that's kind of how I feel about.
Like equity.
About these ones is about the other ones as well.
Yeah, and it might just be wording. It could be equity is providing what is needed to support their academic, social, emotional and career development. You know, equity is providing. Something like that.
Yeah, so I'll throw that into the. Other one, just for fun. Um, and I mean, like, like I said, we can definitely. We. I, I kind of envisioned what I was doing with my draft, um, as just like, let me kind of dump everything I want. Into this and then we would. Make it look better and read better, um, kind of thing.
That's a great start.
You just, yeah, just so we have something to, to start with, um.
Life mentioned.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be advocates for just making sure again that we're covering those with disabilities as well as the poverty in here too, because it.
Yeah, so it does, it does in the, in the language up at the beginning and in a couple other spots, it does say ability. And like right here, it says ability. And it also says like family economics and then, um, further down, when it like gets into it more, it does say socioeconomic. There we go, socioeconomic background. So I do think that's in there, but I, I am totally like, please. I, I, I think yes, the whole goal of the committee is that we like make sure that it is. Really in there. Um.
Mike, were you saying something?
Uh, you had mentioned the, the Essex Westford, uh, definition. I like that too. So I just linked that and put it in the comments. What they put as a definition.
Oh, I just straight up copy and pasted it in here so that we can just.
Yeah, well, and also, I think if you scroll down to the, the bottom, I mean, they have like. Four pages.
Yeah.
Definition.
Oh.
Right, they really have like, the first two pages are the thing, the, the policy where, you know, they kind of. Bold some words. And then download, they have, you know, four pages where they define each of those terms.
Yeah, I do think theirs is a little. Unwieldy. Um, like I, I. I could be wrong. And if we get to this point and we're working and I'm happy to change my mind, but I just. Seeing a policy that's six pages makes me. Nervous. I feel like it's just doing too much. Like, how much of this is? Should be procedure? Like, how much of this would be better linked as legal resources? You know, how much of this would be better linked as, you know, check out the manual, you know, like. I.
I mean, if you, if you look at the four pages of definitions, like a lot of those terms. Um, you know. May, may or may not appear in our policy, but. If they are appearing in the front matter. I do see why it's a good idea to define them.
One hundred percent. I do, I do think if we use any of these, we should definitely take it, but you know, like use. Their definitions as a jumping off point, I just. I, I, I almost like, it's just so unwieldy. I'd rather start with a simple one and then like add stuff and. In, instead of start with this one and then. Try to parse it down, but that's just how my brain works on the process, so that.
I'm right there with you. It, it feels like this needs to be more, you know, whether or not it relates to our procedures, whether it relates to our curriculum. Um, I think if we start trying to bring all these terms into the policies and I'm just gonna put on my community hat here. I think we could cause a lot of. Angst that I don't think we need to be bringing to the table right now. I'll just be honest. Um, and I think that we can make sure to get a policy. That is comprehensive and all encompassing without bringing in all of these terms.
So maybe, maybe it'd be helpful, um, to just. Take a step back and just think kind of around some design principles. For it, um. Because I think what I'm hearing you say, Elizabeth, is. Um, being thoughtful about terminology in the sense of not in, um. Unnecessarily. Um. Turning some people off and or.
I don't see that these terms need to be in our policy. I mean, I, I think that, you know, using the language that we just saw in, um. In the EQS as well as the, what's the other one that we were just referring to? You know, the Vermont School Boards Association. And, you know, I think we use that language in the policy. And yes, am I trying to not use language that immediately is going to trigger potentially people in the community? Yes. I'm nodding my head. Yes, I'm doing that. Because I think that using the language that is already provided. By these two other organizations is encompassing. It is not including these terms, but I think it is encompassing.
You know, but there's, I mean, there's stuff that like they put into their, the. The Essex Westford School District, like. They have anti-races defined because they use that word, whereas we just don't use that. And instead say education that is, you know, conscious of. All these groups. And I feel like that's saying the same thing without throwing in a definition, a word that needs a definition later, you know, so. Um.
I mean, I agree with that to a certain extent. Also just recognizing that, um, the EQS uses that term. So like, I mean, I'm just thinking of a, a design principle, you know, I, I just kind of jotted down for myself, you know. Be thoughtful about terms that could unnecessarily, um. Use the word trigger, Elizabeth. Anger. Um, generate. Reflexive pushback, you know, I mean, there's, there's certain words, like if, if genocide's in there. You could say there's gonna be some people who. It's gonna get there.
Well, let's use that as an example. Do we need to be talking about genocide? We're gonna say that we're gonna use, you know. Different cultural perspectives in terms of historical events. Like, to me, that is a statement that I feel confident we can go out to the community in. I think if you start bringing in. Some of these other more specific terms, and that's not to say that those are not terms that are going to be in our curriculum and our training. Um, but I think that there's a way to do it that again is all encompassing without. More explicitly using language that I think can set off people in the community that might result in pushback and. I'll just be honest, personally, I, I think that we. I'll just say it. Again, and I started this meeting and I started last meeting by saying it, you know, I'm amazed by how much Harwood already has in place. And I think once we do the inventory. I think that it's gonna be comprehensive. Does that mean that we don't have gaps? I think we'll have gaps and I think that we'll be able to put procedures and trainings and everything else and reporting in place for those. Um. I would not support putting anything out there. That I think is going to be, and I'm gonna use a word again, like triggering to the community, especially right now, where I feel like. The community is very worked up about. Our educational performance, our budgets. And so that's not to say that I'm not behind this equity policy, but I think it can be done in such a way. That. We can deliver the objectives as required or as, as actually as required with the EQS. Without, you know, upsetting people. Yeah, without upsetting those people who think we're going too far.
I mean, I will say so far, like some straight up. Doing a control find on the terms that they. They included. Um, and I got all the way down to multicultural. So I'm on page two of their definitions. And that is the first one that we use in ours. Um. So I just, to me, the Essex. Westford policy feels like that person that thinks they're super smart and is trying to explain things to you in. Aggressively intellectual terms and then it makes you feel like an idiot. That's the vibe I'm getting from their policy and I don't. Like it, um, I just feel like there's a. An easier way of getting the message across than a six-page document.
So I think that, you know, uh, if we're thinking about other things we wanna learn about. One possibility would be to do some learning about what the process was to bring that policy. Because.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know the full story. What I do know is that they have a D E I coordinator there. Who's a very learned person, well-respected, who worked, um, with a lot of people in their community and students. So, um, it was a very collaborative process. Um, and, you know, I think that. I, I totally agree, you know, that ultimately thinking about guidelines, we wanna have something that can be. Um. You know, that's why I said it's not unnecessarily, you know, triggering slash, um, causing reflexive pushback. Right? We wanna be thoughtful. Um, and we wanna have something that's understandable to people. Um, so that, you know. Again, our advocates in the community can look at it, so the teachers understand it. So that's gonna, you know. We're, we're gonna not wanna use a lot of like super heavy academic type language, for example, technical language. Um, so I, to me, those are a couple of guiding principles, but. I do think we, you know, as a committee have to come to terms with the fact that we are. Uh, I'll say that if we try to write an equity policy that's not gonna piss anybody off.
I didn't say that.
Well, I'm just saying it, but like, cause, cause it's tempting, right? To think like we could just write and we could have like a kumbaya moment. But.
Sorry, I mean, just to clarify that, I'm not saying don't piss anyone off. What I'm saying is. Let's focus on as much common ground as possible, especially in our current environment where people are extremely worked up. About our Harwood Unified Union School District right now. That's what I'm, that was my comment. And I think that there's really good precedents that's been set by a number. Of other school districts that have come out with policy. I think that you've got the Vermont School Board Association and you got the ESQ language. I think there's a lot of really good starting points. I think you go to the Vermont School Board Association. They've had grants out there. Some of these schools have brought people in lots of expense, lots of community debate, very heated. That has gone on. I mean, I looked into some of this. It has gone on for multiple years. I think Montpelier still hasn't even accepted theirs because they've been doing a lot of heavy analysis. And I think we need to question, I'm gonna use my phrase that I used the other day around time box. And I think we had said that our desires to have this done by the end of the year for a variety of reasons. And that is not to say that we wouldn't want input from the variety of groups that we've already identified. We want groups from. I'm just expressing my personal perspective here is that. I feel strongly about having this equity policy. I do not feel like I can support an equity policy that is going to cause. A lot of uproar in our community, especially given our current environment where I think we need to do more trust building actually with our communities right now.
Um, as far as input from the community too, I really liked. I think it was Washington, um, had a thing at the end of theirs that said. This coalition will act in an advisory capacity, um, and any recommendations they make shall be timely shared with the board. I liked that paragraph. I don't know if we have, um, a coalition that's willing to partner with us on that level of like. Letting us know and having it in our policy of like, they will let us know if they notice. Inequity within our schools, but I, I, I enjoyed, um. That addition by Washington.
Are you referencing the Essex Westford when they talk about an equity advisory committee?
I don't know, I'm, I'm.
It was Washington Central.
It was, yeah, thank you. Yeah, Washington Central, like at the very end of there, on the last paragraph, it said. They had a coalition. Uh, but I.
The Humanity and Justice Coalition?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I like that. Uh, and if we have a similar resource that we can use, I. I would like to explore possibly having a similar. Paragraph to that in our policy, um. But I do need to log off and I'm sorry that I have to go off early, uh, but I did share with you my really little draft. Uh, if you guys want to poke around on it and. Uh, maybe we can. You know, life, if you want to, maybe we can kind of look at it more in depth, um, at the next meeting.
We wanna talk about time, life, uh, before Tori jumps off.
Um, do you have a second, Tori?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can, I can, I have a little more.
Okay. Um. Would a Wednesday, an off Wednesday from a board meeting work for folks?
Yeah, the next one is the fifth, right? So that would be next, literally next Wednesday or. Or the nineteenth.
Is the next meeting the fifth or the twelfth?
Hmm, sorry, the next school board meeting is the twelfth, so the next off one would be the fifth. Is what I have in my calendar.
Me too.
Okay, cool. I've, I've gotten a couple of them wrong.
People more inclined to meet in a week or in three?
I'd probably be, I have a, uh.
I can be. Good to meet in a week if that works for everybody else.
I may be a little late. We have our, um, Mad River Valley Rotary, uh. Member night, talk about the survey. Tori will.
What time does that end?
Supposed to be four to seven.
Okay.
So if you wanted to start and I can join afterwards.
Yeah, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, that's great.
Are, are other folks good with that?
Next Wednesday is fine.
Sorry. Yeah, okay, now, what time on next one?
Are you trying to jump? I feel like Tori keeps trying to jump.
No, I, no, 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 I. Just was losing the connection, so I. Didn't hear what Mike said was the only problem.
He's gonna be a little late.
Uh, but next, you're thinking next Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. What time?
Look, should we do same time?
Sure.
Um, and I would suggest that we take a look at, um. I I I would love if other people like to check understanding on this. Um, when we hand it back over to the district folks to be able to hand them some draft language as well as some some kind of design principles, like what we're going for. So that as they start to work on it, they know like, okay, we think that we're still fulfilling what you're asking for. So maybe next time we can all bring some ideas around the draft language. We can mess with Tori's piece. But maybe we can start with those broader design principles, which the ones from tonight I just had jotted down from our conversation is that piece about I don't have the language right, but being thoughtful about terms. Particularly ones that could unnecessarily make people angry, triggered, et cetera. Um, making it as understandable as possible with as um less jargon as possible and defined when needed. So clear definitions when needed. So those are just a couple. I'm thinking if we have a few bullets like that to provide them with some parameters and then here's our current draft. That I think that would put them in pretty good shape to be able to give us something back in the fall. Or other, does that sound good to other people as a?
That sounds good.
But come back with edits and come back with some of those design principles.
Yeah. So it's all good. And I guess if anybody has like particular other resources that they've come across that they think could be useful to look at. Like Elizabeth, you were saying, you've been looking into a little bit about some of the process pieces with some of the policies. Like if if you find something that you think would be instructive for us.
I would say it's probably not what we want to do because I, I think, again, I feel like we set a desired time of trying to complete this by the end of the year. I think there's a lot of really good precedents that we can borrow from. I don't think we're in a point or place. Never mind, I I'm not sure how the community would feel about us spending money, bringing in paid outside resources for like a comprehensive one or two-year, you know, process, but that's
I do think, I do think that the community groups that we send it out to are probably gonna give us some resources to look at as well.
And I think that's
When they come back. Um, so I, I, I think honestly, them coming back to me with resources is gonna be much more effective than me attempting a deep dive on this on my own. It's kind of my thoughts.
Good point. We'll have, we'll probably have more homework to do after we get them involved.
Definitely.
Okay. So we have a next meeting, we have some ideas for, I'll put together formal agenda, any, anything else?
It's my calendar for, you know, my hardwood email, but literally the meetings don't show up on my calendar. And is that because we keep like re-forwarding the Zooms or what is?
Well, there, there's two pieces. Like I just sent out a calendar invite for next week.
Yes, I see that.
Normally Curtis sends out a Zoom link. I, I sent out the link this time because uh, he had a finance committee meeting and we couldn't reuse the same link.
Okay. And apologize for the mix-up. I actually had it in my calendar for today and tomorrow. And I was assuming it was Thursday for some reason. So my apologies for the mix-up.
Elizabeth, before we go, I'm just wondering, um, did, were there other model policies or other pieces that you felt? It sounds like the Essex Westford, you feel like it, it's, it kind of goes over that line of having some strong language and maybe some
My opinion, right? Because we're all in a spectrum, right? You know, and so there's gonna be some people there that are like, that doesn't even go far enough. And then, you know, some of the other policies that you I feel like of the policies that you shared is just like, here's some examples.
Yes.
That was probably the most comprehensive and probably, you know, push it a little bit, you know, here and some of the other ones maybe would be more in the middle. And so, you know, we're all feeling what the community is feeling right now, and it's really heartbreaking, you know, around the school budgets and you know, our communities are really torn right now. And so, you know, my concern here is how do you make this comprehensive? But how do you do it in such a way that is not fueling a fire that has already started, if you will? And there is increased um focus on our schools right now, not just by typically it's the parents, you know, who are sort of focused on what's going on there. But I think increasingly more and more people from the community saying, what's going on in those schools anyways? Where is this money going? What's going on with test scores and all, you know, all this other sort of stuff? I mean, Dr. Mike's got his hands full with us. Um, and so part of this can is also capacity, right? And so I want to make sure that what we come up with, you know, is feasible and we'll be able to better understand that, I think, once we have like the full inventory of what we already have and where the gaps are. So, you know, my reaction here is just, you know, it is that reaction to what I'm sensing in the community right now and making sure that maybe we take, you know, end up with a policy that feels a little bit more middle ground. Um, but I don't think is neglectful, um, but maybe is not pushing things as far as perhaps some people would want to.
And and I totally agree that with that, and I think a lot of it is is framing, right? And so again, for me thinking, I, it it's helpful for me to think about, you know, terms that are unnecessarily triggering, right? Like there's ways that you can say things in different ways and you know, a lot of this language has been very politicized. And so, you know, sometimes you almost have to create new language potentially.
And I think you can cover again this policy without getting some into some of this terminology, you know, I, I think that's where Tori was going, which is we don't need a policy necessarily that, again, could be publicized, right? Where we're trying to educate the broad pu- public, you know, our job is to educate our children, right? And I think a lot of this terminology is going to be embedded into our curriculum, into our training of of our staff and so on. Um, and so I think we should use the appropriate language and definitions necessary for us to have a comprehensive policy. And I think Tori's point about, do you need four pages of definition? It, it's, it's a lot. It's extreme. I, I did not see that these other policies have that.
And and your point, Elizabeth, what, what you want to do with policy is to give kind of the guardrails and the parameters for the administration, so we know what
Okay.
I'd be interested to, do you, what do you think about the T-FAR statement?
Uh, let me pull it up again. And, you know, I had made the comment before, I mean, it feels like T-FAR folds under, you know, this equity policy essentially. Um, let me just pull it up. I have read it. I just don't have it open in front of me.
It's a little confusing because there's like a draft at the top and there's a lot of comments, but like if you scroll down to the bottom, you find where they, they've
You know, the T-FAR statement, it's, it's a statement. Wh- what is the question i- in terms of the T-FAR statement, how it relates to this policy and do we borrow and engrain the T-FAR statement into our policy? Is that your question?
I think that my, my question is right now, this is the best representation we have or, you know, the only sort of, you know, equity-related um, expression from educators in our district.
Um, so, so I'm just being totally honest here because it's really the only way I know how to be. Um, we acknowledge racism in our community is still happening. I don't know if anyone saw the Waterbury Front Porch Forum um post by Meredith. Um, that's a teammate of my son's. That is heartbreaking. We know he is a fantastic child and for him to have a racist comment.
Oh, I did, I didn't see that. What was it?
It was um, you didn't see it anyways. It was, um, why can't I think of his name? He, Tegan, Tegan, who's a fantastic kid and he's a lacrosse player and he was riding his bike down River Road and and somebody yelled out the window a racist slur at him and his mother posted something about it on Front Porch Forum today, as I've been reading, staying on top of all the school board stuff. Uh, so is racism happening in our community? It 100% is happening in our community, absolutely. When I see something, we acknowledge racism is in our community is still happening. If we mean our community is in our schools, then I'm gonna say, okay, then like that's a community that we have been tasked with creating policy for. I get concerned when we start making statements like that, if we're trying to imply the broader community because I don't feel like that is our span of what we have been tasked with. And again, I'm a believer that clearly racism is happening in our broader community. But what I'm saying is, we've been tasked with, my Harwood, Harwood Board is this community. And if we want to say that we acknowledge racism is still happening in our schools, then, you know, that I can agree with. I don't know if that makes sense, but I think these are the things that I think personally I want to be careful with because I don't want to come out with statements about like here's who we are as a broader community, because I don't feel like that's my place, right? I'm not mayor of, you know, this community or whatever. Um, my job is within, you know, the walls of our schools. That's my personal take.
And do you think if that was changed to racism ha- happening in our schools, that that would be something that wouldn't?
I mean, it's still, it's
Wouldn't concern
This is an equity state. And so let me ask a question here. Like, do we need an equity statement? I feel like we're being tasked with, we have an equity committee who is being tasked with what? If our job is to come up with an equity policy, then the question is, what, what are we trying to do with this equity statement? Is it important for us to have this equity statement as a preamble to the policy?
I, I mean, I think if you look across the range of model policies, yes, it's kind of unavoidable that at a certain point, you're, you're gonna have to make some statements of principle. And give some context, right?
And, and I have a hard time, like this needs to be more comprehensive than we're gonna be courageous, lifelong learners who actively seek to be anti-racist. Again, I've got a son with learning disabilities. I get phone calls and have for the last couple of years because, you know, kids are taunting him in class because he can't read.
Right.
Yeah, so that's not anti-racist, but that is, you know, the happening in the classroom. So this has to be more comprehensive. Or the kid who's coming in with poverty and the clothes that he's been wearing all week long because he's got one change of clothes, you know, it's so what, I think that this equity statement needs to be much more comprehensive and it obviously, I mean, this is coming from the Racism, you know, Coalition or, you know, through that lens. So if we want to look at that as a starting point,
Right.
That's fine, but we're gonna have to edit this, so.
Totally, totally. I, I think what I'm, what I'm just asking you to reflect on a little bit is that you know, for me, the policy it has to be centered on the needs of those who are um being harmed by systemic oppressions. Right? And so people are experiencing things um, due to their different identities. And in some cases, those identities are currently marginalized or traditionally underserved. So, you know, even in the EQS, you see all this language about history, right? And some of the stuff that Tori paint, uh, posted in there, right? So, like, you, it's, it's hard to get away from that stuff. And that stuff has been, you know, constructed in such a way that s- some people are gonna feel like it's attacking them. To just even acknowledge that, you know, some people are getting the wrong end of the stick because of their identities. And so, you know, for me, the equity policy needs to center those folks. It needs to center their voices and their needs. And so as we go through this process, however, you know, time-bound it is, if we're to do it authentically, we're gonna want to hear from those folks. And so when those folks say like, you know, if we have kids in our community, for example, who are experiencing racism, who say, hey, um, I, I would love for my school to acknowledge that I experienced racism in my school or even broadly in the community, and therefore our school has an obligation to, you know, provide a welcoming space for me in school and to try to propagate out some learning that's gonna help me in my day-to-day life, even when I walk out of store. Or whatever they ask for, is what I, you know what I'm saying? We are, if we want to respond to that authentically, we're, it's gonna be unavoidable to get in some places where some people are gonna perceive that they're being you know, attacked or that it's a zero-sum game and that as we're elevating some of these voices or identities that they're, we're threatening them or taking something away. And so, like, I totally hear you, like, we gotta, like, be strategic about it. But, um, I think that we have to also be ready, because the way I think about it is that we have the power and the privilege to be able to say like, let's put this in writing, so that people who don't necessarily have the power and the privilege that we have are, are in a better spot, are better protected and that we're putting some more things in place for them to, to be successful and to thrive.
And I think you and I are probably in a commonplace on about 80% or maybe 90%, which is great. Because I mean, this is the whole, the whole spirit of this is to find the common ground and for us to represent that.
Totally.
So, again, I'm just gonna restate that I know there's gonna be people upset on either ends. There's gonna be a group that says you're not going far enough and people who are like, this is, we don't need this, this is worthless. Focus on math reading and whatever, science. And I'm not trying to focus on the extremes. I'm trying to focus on the middle. And I think that when we use statements like you know, our community, I think we have to, that there's a perfect example where you need a definition by what we mean by community.
Totally. Super important.
Because again, if, if we're saying we're coming up with this equity statement for our community and it goes beyond the doors of our schools, we have to be prepared for feedback from our communities who are saying, who are you to tell us what our community is? We're asking you to define the community within the walls. And so I think that is probably just a discussion point and, and an alignment around a definition that we just need to align to.
Totally with you. And I think that, that thinking about how equity fundamentally caters to those who are marginalized.
Yeah.
That just kind of like complicates it a little bit, you know, when you're saying like in the middle, not once, you know what I mean? And it's, it's it's just hard to talk about this stuff with an outlet feeling divisive or feeling like we're putting people in groups because you almost have to to like try to pick it apart before you can bring it back together in the end. But there is certainly some people who are not in the middle per se, who are on the margins, who need to be included this and potentially even prioritized.
Completely agree. And so a- again, when I, when I say people who are gonna think you're not going far enough, I'm not excluding these groups that have been articulated, you know, very clearly in this EQF, you know, that's, that's clarified, right? And so I, I'm thinking more broadly, you know, our voter base and people who are starting to look up under the hood. That, that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying, hey, we're just not going to bother with those certain groups that are in the EQS because they're, you know, over I, I hope I'm being clear about that.
Yeah.
Okay, I, again, I think we're, we're on the same page, but I think that that equity statement needs work, should we decide to use that as like a preamble to uh our policy.
Yeah, and I, I was just using that as an example for the moment because as we know, that's, you know, definitely focused on racial equity, which is one part of the bigger puzzle.
Right.
But I just want to anticipate that as we open up the process to um, leaders in our district and community members, that, you know, there's gonna come a point when we're called to say like, you know, are we willing to like you know, take some heat um, on behalf of folks and
And I would also say that as we're looking for um, we should look at exactly who that is and making sure that we get that broad spectrum of, of feedback. And again, I don't mean like the fringe, right? I mean, but making sure that we're not going after groups who are like, you know, that's what they do day in, day out. Um, but other people, I, I mean, I can, I can think of some people in, in our community who might be able to provide some really good feedback.
Me too.
That, that may, that may not be those particular groups that I think are coming top of mind that we want feedback from.
I, I wonder Mi- Mike if it, it may be too soon and not good timing, but whether it's next meeting or the one after, whether you might be able to bring some folks, you know, who, who might be some of the holders of the, the next phase of the process when we're ready to kick something towards somebody, who can be involved in some of the conversation. You can maybe think a little bit about who that might be and what the timing might look like.
Okay, that sounds great. I'm sure somebody
It's sort of a busy time of year, maybe next week, but
That's all right. I, I, some people are passionate about this. I don't think we'll have trouble getting one or two people.
Great. Elizabeth, I really, really appreciate you engaging. Like this is, like you said, how we can find the common ground and how we can like work through. You know, I think doing this kind of work, it's, it's really unique and difficult to do in such a public setting, that, you know, that we're being recorded. Because so much of it for me is like just, it's very personal work, you know? I'm constantly thinking about my own identities and, you know, so I, you bringing like, um, you know, your experience as a parent into the conversation tonight, like um, you know, your experience as a parent into the conversation tonight, like just so appreciate it. And I, I, I totally agree. I think we like have huge overlap. And then just trying to figure out what's it gonna look like in writing in detail. That's, that's the work we're gonna do together.
And we have such a resource in you life and all, you know, obviously the deep expertise that you are bringing to the table as well. And I have no doubt that we're gonna be successful in, in bringing a policy that we can be really proud of. And that our school community as well as broader community can be proud of as well.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm definitely in a, you know, a learner and shepherding a process, you know, facilitation mode. Like, um, you know, I, I, I have no illusions that I could just, you know, go lock myself away and, and write a policy that would be workable. Like I think that your, your idea about we have to find the sweet spot with our community where it's specific enough to make a difference and, but it's, has enough support that we can really have as close to a consensus as we can get, totally agree. And that, that's gonna take a process, so.
Yeah. And that's one of my objections, just on the side here, as I'm wearing, you know, representing athletics tonight.
I have my board.
After Mike, I'm trying to, and getting people, try to get them jazzed up for the not quite Independence Day parade. The theme this year is athletics. We had the boys varsity team won states. We're lining up our lacrosse boys team to win states. Our bass fishing boys won too.
There you go. Yeah.
And, you know, despite all this, despite, we don't have this huge budget and these great playing fields, we've got these scrappy, hardworking kids. And I'm starting to talk to parents and I was gonna, like, I want to get our school out there. I want our kids, our coaches, like on those floats drumming up enthusiasm about our schools because I want, we need this community glue back together again. I, I it's really been heartbreaking, sort of this feud that's happened around the budget. So I'm just putting that out there. I don't know where that's gonna go, but sort of that's my passion right now. And the other thing is regardless of what happens with budget, we're, we're gonna start getting in front of businesses and ramp up some funding on that side too.
Great.
Awesome. Well, sorry, we went overtime, folks. Really appreciate you hanging in. I've learned a lot tonight. Um, and we'll see, see you all in a week? Is that what we planned? All right.
See you next Wednesday.
Forward to it. Take care.